And staff has put together some suggestions. Now, there's no question that these suggestions are based on if council wants to consider the West Henry Street property. I mean, that's pretty obvious because we have on the suggestion that if you're going to consider that property, you may want to include somebody from the library. You need somebody from District 2. You need people from District 1 because that particular site borders, while it's in the historic District 1, excuse me, in District 1, historic district, it borders District 2. So you need to have representation from both. You probably want some people from the pickleball community. These are, again, our suggestions. If you want to look at other sites in the city, then we would probably have to realign the composition of the committee. Whatever we do, the committee, since it's going to report back to City Council with recommendations, it would be an open committee. We would have to advertise the public meetings, take minutes, and the public would be invited.
Open for comment.
I would like to just say that I am adamantly opposed to putting it on Henry Street. I have been deluged with District 2 people who feel that we're moving it from one residential district to another residential district, and I don't think that's what we wanted to do at all. And if you insist on considering the Henry Street property, then I would want to have at least two people from District 2 on the committee so that at least their voice is heard.
Okay. Gary?
Okay. I think that it's paramount that we do form a formal committee, and this committee should be open-minded to all locations. Keep in mind that the Henry Street property is, was it, eight or 10 acres? There's a huge part of there. And anything that we do at any location, we would be able to engineer from scratch with keeping noise abatement in mind. So what I believe is, and there's been other properties that have been mentioned to me, some like the triangular piece I wouldn't want to go to, but we still should be in open mind. We should look at it from a much higher level, looking down onto the community in general, where a good location would be, would be an appropriate location, and then also to evaluate the financial aspect of that location. You know, the ideal location might be just behind the tank in Henry Park. That might be the ideal location, but it might be a $3 million project. Well, that would certainly not be something we'd entertain. So what we would want is a committee that would look at a number of potential solutions or alternatives and also add some economic criteria to it and data, including not only what its cost would be, but what its potential ROI would be, or return on investment. And that investment might be in terms of dollars, that investment might be in terms of quality of life, or a combination of the both. But they should be all encompassing and holistically, not rule out any specific location anywhere in the city necessarily at this juncture, but rather have a committee of open-minded people to look holistically at the community as a whole. So I think we need to be very cognizant of that on however we put this committee together.
Ken?
Let me just say that the property, the triangle, is not available for anything other than residential.
I was just throwing that. I wasn't.
It was purchased by a private party, and the intent was to put homes on there.
I understand.
It's not even an acre either, so there wouldn't be any way possible.
I wasn't being serious. I wasn't. I was really tongue-in-cheek.
I just want to put it on the record.
I want to be very clear. I was tongue-in-cheek about it.
Clarify the triangle that you're speaking about.
Whipper Will and Turtle Dove at the end of my street.
Thank you.
It was purchased by a private individual, and it's, again, it's not even an acre.
I'm sorry I even brought it up. It was all.
But I want it on the record.
This is me. I'm irreverent. I apologize.
For whatever assignment the committee gets, that property is technically not even large enough to even consider it.
We'll redact it from the.
Yeah, right. The comments that I've received are that all districts should be represented on this committee because it is something that the citizens of the city will own. All people on the committee must be city residents, and that they should apply for the position on the committee, just like any other board or committee, and that the library rep may not be necessary based on whatever is decided. However, they could be a consultant to the committee, but they don't necessarily need to be an appointee to the committee. Those are my comments.
Okay.
I concur with Debbie that we shouldn't even consider West Henry Street. I feel that all this conversation has shown that it shouldn't be in residential areas, and so my personal feeling is that we should put our full support behind Pickleplex.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
So we have a variety of opinions here. We all did decide we wanted to have a committee. So I guess my question is, how many people do we really want on a committee? Right now, this looks like seven, and if we can change the.
Well, if we have one from each district, that's five right out the gate.
Okay.
Plus somebody from staff to help us with.
Well, staff is staff.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
We're support.
I'm just thinking, well, okay.
So is one, how do we balance, if we have one person from each district, how do we balance pickleball players versus non-pickleball players? What's your suggestion?
I think we make that decision when we see the resumes of the applicants.
Yeah.
And I don't think we need to focus on one district versus another as far as the content of the committee. I think if we have one resident from every district and then perhaps two at-large pickleball community people, you could set it up that way, and that's your seven people.
Yeah. I'd like to point out, with the exception of my irreverence, it seems that Lynn and I are on the exact same page on the way to.
Do we need a council representative?
Yes.
As a participant?
We don't have council representatives on our other city committees. They come to us with suggestions.
Not sure we need it.
Okay.
I'd rather see this be citizen input.
I would too.
I think that's the whole intent.
So what you're saying is one from each district and two at-large pickleball players?
They must be city residents.
And all must be city residents.
Yeah.
And they should apply, just like they do for a regular board position.
And then they apply for, yes, exactly.
Yeah, well, and I think that we would have to do that because.
Then the council will appoint those people based on the applications they receive.
Sounds good.
Does everybody agree with that?
I do.
I just think that's the most fair way to do it, and it gives everybody equal representation throughout the city.
I would just like, in the description of what the committee is supposed to be about, I would also hope that the committee would also be cognizant of not in any way interfering with the development of Pickleplex, but rather whatever we do should also encourage the development of Pickleplex, that we should keep them two segregated items, but also keep in mind that we don't want one to have a negative effect on the other.
That's a good point.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes, Pickleplex is, I agree with John, how we do support.
That's a county issue that happens to have great implications for our city, but this is a question of, do we want to be able to maintain pickleball within city limits, and how do we want to do it to the best benefits of our community as a whole within Punta Gorda?
And keeping an open mind of how we might go about that.
Exactly. Very open mind.
I think we all are pretty much in agreement.
Okay. So I think we have, we have come to a conclusion. Did you make note of that, Howard?
Yep. We're going to have, send out announcements. City clerk, I guess, can send out announcements, asking people to apply. One person from each district will be appointed by City Council. Two at-large members who are pickleball players will be appointed by City Council, and they must be city residents. And then, once the committee is formed, we can get started, and their idea is to look at long-term solutions. That's pretty open.
We can even, if we have to, put bylaws in place with a sunset date for the committee because, at some point, we won't need them anymore. I mean, that's what we did with the Waterfront Advisory Committee back a few years ago.
Good point. You can sunset them.
We can do that.
But I think we want it to be large enough that we don't force them to rush it, because this is not something we want to kick a can down and come up with a quick solution.
Well, no.
Just for a Band-Aid.
And Pickleplex is going to be open, I mean, you know, soon, two months from now, hopefully, there should be play at Pickleplex. So that's going to have, and we'll be able to see what happens then.
Right.
So that we're really not rushing into anything. Sir?
So with respect to the district representatives, is it irrelevant in your mind as to whether or not they are pickleball players or non-pickleball players? And I don't know how we would enforce it either way.
Well, I think, like we said, we'll decide based on, when we see the resumes.
They'll have to miss square check if you.
But what we do, we don't discuss them, so what we, we vote on them. So let's, it's a good question, because let's say for a district, we get, you know, a handful of applicants, some play pickleball, some don't play pickleball. How are we going to know when we vote on people?
Can we make that a line on the application?
Yeah, I mean, you can, and of course, it would be the honor system that you'd be relying upon.
Because, I mean, I just want to say, that's not, I mean, people are going to say what they're going to say in the application is because ultimately, this is about homeowners' rights as well, and so pretty much the resume is going to be what the resume is, and we'll decide who, based on that.
So can we add to these applications, add a line?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You want that just to read yes or no? Do you play pickleball? Yes or no?
Yes, I don't think that we're asking for caliber of play.
Or where they play.
Or away.
Yes.
No.
But if they're pickleball. Anything else on this one?
You mentioned including in the bylaws a sunset date, so are there any other guidelines that you want included in the bylaws? Usually, the bylaws explain the responsibilities of the group.
And then the election of the chairman, chairperson, and stuff like that.
Right. They need to appoint a chair. So there are responsibilities, including a report to council. Is there anything else you can think of that you want included in there? And we can bring those to you so that you can approve them first, obviously. You need to adopt the bylaws.
Nancy?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Is the Gilchrist Park Pickleball Group organized enough that they could choose their representatives to this committee so that we would know that those two people spoke for that contingency of the pickleball community, and then it wouldn't really matter whether anybody else played pickleball or not? We wouldn't have to get into the weeds with that? I'm just asking.
There are a number of people that do play there, and there are, there's a Peace River Picklers organization as well. The Pickleplex Board would not, would like to not participate in this discussion because it really does not, you know, I've had conversation with them about this specifically.
I'm talking about the ones at Gilchrist Park that seem to be semi-organized to keep it in the park. Would they, would it behoove us to have them as the pickleball representatives? And then we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, if District 1 had two people that played pickleball, but they were both from District 1 and they were both good candidates.
I guess we could ask on the application, where do you play? And we could, you know, but.
I liked my comment.
Gary?
I want to play devil's advocate for a second. I don't think we should ask them where they play. We want people to come in with an open mind. Then one could make an argument that if they're playing at Gilchrist Park and are organized, we have two people from Gilchrist Park, one can make an argument, they should recuse themselves because they're already prejudiced that they want to keep in Gilchrist Park. We don't want to have that type of, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I take that respectfully, but I don't think we want to, we may have two people that play in Gilchrist Park that we accept on the committee, but I don't think that should be part of that criteria. I think we want to keep this as holistically in the community as possible.
I'm talking about a whole second thing, like, we would have five district people that would be holistic.
No, I understand.
And then two from the pickleball world.
I have a feeling that we will probably get.
Okay.
A lot of applicants who do play, so I don't, I don't know that we need to be concerned about that.
Okay.
Is my hunch. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, I think we've.
We'll get started. We'll advertise.
Excellent. Okay, then let's move on to item number C, Strategic Plan, FY 2019, January Progress Report.
Items C and D are on there, and here's why. When we did our first round of our Citizens Academy, which is the administrative section, that was two weeks ago, we had 35, roughly 35 folks in the Citizens Academy, large crowd, and we asked them, do you, for instance, look at the weekly report? Do you go on our website and see the various documents that the city has on there, and do you look at them? When we asked, are you aware of our strategic plan, and do you follow along our strategic plan and all the action items? And we only saw maybe three or four hands get raised. When we asked them, have you ever seen our Action Register? And do you follow along on our Action Register? Because we post the Action Register on our website every week. We update it every week, and not one hand was raised. So our comment at the time was, well, then we're not doing our job because the public is not aware, or we're not doing enough to sort of emphasize that we have these documents on our website, and we want people to follow along to check our progress and to see how well we're doing or how well we're not doing. So on the agenda today, we're not going to go over all the items, but our point is to emphasize that, for instance, the strategic plan, we have a number of action items in our strategic plan that we want to try and accomplish this fiscal year, and we have the dates of when we'd like to accomplish them. And we do two progress reports, January, and we'll do another one in May, because then we put out the annual budget and we do a new strategic plan. So what you have in front of you on our agenda today is the January Progress Report. It is also on our website, and through our five priority areas, we have a number of action items, and we have in there a status of where we are with those action items. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that. If there are blank spaces on some of those action items, it's because we haven't gotten to them yet. That's not to say we won't get to them, but our plan is to get to them. There are some action items that we may not accomplish during that fiscal year for a variety of reasons, and if we don't, we state why. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that strategic plan and look at some of the progress that's been made on some of those items in the plan. The other item that we have on there, we'll have our communications manager get up and talk about the Action Register, and some of it's similar, some of it is similar, but there are some projects on the Action Register that are not in our strategic plan, and that's, some of them are more internal, but we also have some progress reports on those, and then we follow them along. So on the strategic plan, again, I'm not going to go over all these items. They're there for public scrutiny. If you look at the first priority area, the financial and economic sustainability, we'll get more involved in the budget process coming up in February when we present the Long Range Financial Plan. We will highlight some budget issues with City Council at that time. We will schedule some community meetings or a meeting on the budget to get budget input. The master plan process, well underway. We will continue to publicize that. We've already settled the Fisherman's Village land sale and our special use fund. On infrastructure, we just had a Capital Projects Status Report in December. We put that on our website so you can follow along as to how we're doing on some of our infrastructure projects. Since that Capital Projects Report, there is much more activity now along Jones Loop Road or our sewer force main, so that is moving along much better than we reported back in December. We feel better on that.
Good. I see the construction going on. It's great.
Yep. No, no, that's moving forward. Eventually, pretty soon, you'll be getting your financial plan for the septic to sewer, and our automated meter reading project is 88% complete, so they're moving along there. Again, I don't really want to get into all of the statuses. The point is, it's on our website, it's for public scrutiny. Follow along. We'll do another one in May.
Okay. Any questions for Howard? Gosh, you've captivated us, Howard.
No, I just.
I asked all my questions in my briefing.
There we go.
I had lots.
Yeah, and again, the point was, we had 35 people in the Citizens Academy. Some are newer residents, some have been here, and they weren't looking at our stuff, and that upsets us. We want you to look at it.
And it's a compelling document.
I do have one question with, that's on the Action Register.
We haven't gotten there yet.
We haven't gotten there.
Oh, okay.
We're getting there.
Never mind.
We're getting there.
Anything more on the strategic plan? Excuse me. Then we'll move to the Action Register. Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning. Melissa Riker, Communications Manager for the City of Punta Gorda. The Action Register is one of the documents, as Howard has mentioned, that we publish every week. It goes out every Thursday, and it's really kind of the step-by-step analysis of what happens on a city project. So if you're curious about Buckley's Pass and want to know where that's at, you could take a look at that Action Register, and it's going to tell you that yesterday we closed on the land for Buckley's Pass, so great information there on that. It's going to tell you about stuff that might not get talked about in the City Council meeting. Yesterday, we were working on our ADA plan, and we had some consultants in that were meeting with the various department heads and touring the buildings and seeing where the signage was going to need to go. That information will be there. It's published every single Thursday. It'll tell you the project, when that project was supposed to be done, and what the most recent action step was on that project. You go to our website, and you go under Government, click the Government tab, City Manager, City Communications, and then Action Register, and they're there. You can look back probably three, four years at least and see all of the steps that have been taken on the various projects. If there's any questions that the City Council members have about any of the projects that are going on right now, I'd be happy to answer that or bring up one of the other department heads that could help with those questions.
Lynn, you have a question?
Well, she answered part of my question. The issue about the land closing yesterday, I received a citizen email. It's obvious people are reading the Action Register because I got an email that said, I see that you're supposed to be closing on the land today. Did it happen?
It happened.
It happened. So I was able to answer that question after.
I signed the documents on Monday.
Yeah.
And the closing was yesterday.
Yeah, exactly. And so the other question that I've been asked is, what is going on with the FEMA decision to separate the contracts? And I did talk to Howard about this in my briefing, but if you could maybe bring people up to date on that.
Kristen?
I think that's something people really want to know about.
Kristen Simia, Finance Director. And yes, so FEMA has separated that out, and they're moving the Sewal project along. It went through the state. We signed it, so we're hoping to get our documents for obligating the Sewal project without the mitigation at this point. So the mitigation will come later when we have a permit.
One thing Howard shared with me that I did not know is that all the money will be coming funneled through the state rather than a check from FEMA to the city.
That's correct. That's how it's been in the past as well.
Okay.
Now, we do have an update. I don't know if it made it on the Action Register yet, maybe. Debris removal, want to discuss that?
Yes, so debris removal has been updated. They have accepted our explanation for the overtime and corrected that, so we submitted our request for reimbursement on that, so we hope to get a check very, fairly quickly.
And we did get a letter from the State of Florida on that, right? So that it's.
Yes. Now, that's a big, that's a big movement because there was an article in the paper, I think it was last week, that said cities and counties throughout the state of Florida are not getting reimbursed for Hurricane Irma, and, I mean, Michael was a lot sooner than Irma. Irma's, I mean, that goes all the way back September of 2017, and we haven't got, we haven't seen one penny yet. We fronted all the costs. So the fact that we now have the state agency who funnels the money getting a little better slowly, our first check should be coming in for debris removal, which is significant. I mean, it's how much?
About $250,000.
About $250,000. And then after that will come emergency preparedness.
That one's still with FEMA. Well, it kind of came through the state. We sent it back to FEMA because when FEMA sent it on to the state, again, it was the overtime issues. So we sent that back. We refused to sign it at that point with the incorrect dollar amounts because it was a large amount that they took off. So we hope the next one that we'll actually see first is our Sewals.
Oh, okay, so we may get Sewals. The point is that cities and counties need to have, this is a budget plug, need to have some sufficient reserves on hand in order to pull yourselves through until you start getting reimbursed. Yes, on larger ones, we have to finance, we have to take a loan, but a good reserve will help you get through some of these periods because you're fronting dollars until you get reimbursed. These reimbursements take time. That's a good question. There?
Yes.
I would just like to add to this and also compliment our staff in general. Also, in my meeting in Tallahassee, this type of item was also talked about, particularly relative to Michael, those communities like Mexico Beach, et cetera, they've blown through their reserves and are in a very difficult situation. There's also concern at this juncture that may or may not come to fruition, but there was considerable concern that FEMA funds may be deployed in a different direction for a while. Those are legitimate concerns. They haven't happened, they may not happen, but those discussions have been occurring at the federal level that would have an impact, probably from a timing standpoint for us. So even in the case of, we're still working on Irma, and the folks from Michael may get ratcheted back even further as we might if those issues come fruition. So it has been our fortune to have good financial management in this city, and I want to commend staff for that, even though I am on record and still am that I would like to see more reserve, and I won't budge from that particularly, but this exemplifies it. But the professionalism of our nice little town seems to be able to deal with these great, and I commend you all, and thank you. So I just wanted to add that little tidbit.
Yes, and staff has been doing a tremendous job at working hand-in-hand with FEMA to make sure we address every issue that comes up so that it's, and that's been my response to residents when they question, you know, will we get the money? Well, you know, we're working with FEMA, and we've had no, we've got, received no indication from FEMA that there's not an intent to pay.
Correct.
It's just, we have to.
Jump through the hoops.
Jump through the hoops. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Kristen. Okay, discussion regarding adoption of a resolution to establish a policy regarding council action on non-agenda items.
I'll take that.
Karen, since you put it on the agenda.
Yes, on your December 23 meeting, there was discussion about establishing a policy of not taking action on non-agenda items. There was a policy adopted many years ago by resolution to take action on, or to allow the addition of items to a published agenda if they met certain criteria. So rather than tying your hands and saying you don't want to take any action on anything that's not on the agenda, I developed this resolution based on the previous policy with the addition of the one criteria allowing you to add an item if it was not controversial and/or it was an administrative item. So regardless of whether or not they meet any of the criteria, you still need to, there still needs to be, according to the policy, a vote of. you still need to, there still needs to be, according to the policy, a vote of a majority plus one to, before you can add an agenda item. And one thing that's not in the policy that I would suggest is that any item to be included on the agenda would be done at the beginning of the meeting to allow for public input on those items.
That's what I was going to say. Okay, comments, Lynn?
The only comment I have is, how, who decides what is controversial and what is not controversial?
You do. And I will make, I did see the email expressing concern about that. And I will tell you that the Attorney General actually advised boards to not add something that is, and he used the term "controversial." So that's actually where I got that language, was from the Attorney General's opinion.
I mean, it is subjective. That's why, you know, it could-
Well, I think, I see your point, but I think you also know when things are controversial and when they're not.
You know, I've thought about that, and there have been times when I know I may have issue with something and nobody else might have thought about it, and I've brought it up at a council meeting. So there seems to be, you know, I know if controversy is the right word, but, you know, agreement. And I think that I've observed that as well, where I didn't particularly have an issue with something, but another council member did, so.
And that's why there's a vote of majority plus one regard, to determine whether or not-
To put that on the agenda.
So that would be four.
So we would have to have four out of five would need to vote to put that on the agenda? And we would do that at the beginning of a meeting, is what you're saying?
I would say, I would recommend that those, if you're going to add anything, it be done at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. Debbie?
Well, one of the things that, as I was looking over this, occurred to me is that I don't know if the public perception of an agenda item and our perception of an agenda item are necessarily the same thing. For instance, two weeks ago, we discussed sound abatement at Gilchrist Park. And when we cut it from eight courts to four courts, there was this huge outcry that that wasn't on the agenda. And what I would ask the public to remember is that we don't get to talk about anything before we come up here. And so if in the nature of discussing something like sound abatement at Gilchrist Park, somebody comes up with an idea like that, I think we have to be allowed the variance, you know, because otherwise, we'd be putting things on the agenda for the next six years. And I just think that there's this lack of understanding of what we can and cannot talk about. And I would hate for this to be seen as limiting us to line items on the agenda to have an action as opposed to general conceptual things. Does that make sense?
Yes, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I had a conversation with Howard as well, that, you know, perhaps staff needs to consider in the writing of these items to put as such as, adding language that provides, this is an example of what could be, so that we're, it's really showing that it's-
But not limited to.
Yes.
It needs to be understood that, you know, just because there are three things, that doesn't mean that we can't discuss four or five. That's my concern. I just want to make sure that it's not seen as limiting.
I would agree. We're thinking outside the box, trying to think of things as we're here. You're right. We can't discuss anything. And so for us to get pinned down and having to get in this procedure, caught in this procedural maze-
Yeah, that's-
Could really just kind of slow things down.
What Debbie just said is a great point, and the fact is, what we discussed was in reference to sound abatement, because those are different mechanisms we can use and implement that will help cut down the amount of complaints and noise and everything that's going on there. So while it's very broad in its appearance in the conversation, it was all in an effort to try to get control of the sound and the noise over there. So, you know, technically, it was within our rights to discuss it, and you're right. I mean, we need to have people understand that we have to be able to have a very broad, open conversation about what options do exist out there in cyberspace when we talk, yeah.
I agree with everything we said. We must always keep in mind, though, that we'll always be somebody out there that doesn't understand.
Right, or doesn't agree.
Or doesn't agree.
Yeah.
There is a distinction to be made between items for discussion and items upon which you're going to take a vote. So if you have a discussion item, you can expand the topic as long as it's related without running afoul of the policy that the public needs to be aware of what you're going to discuss and have an input on. But if that discussion item is going to evolve to a vote, then that is going to be on another agenda so that the opportunity is available for the public to chime in on what you're going to take a vote on. On the other hand, if you've got something that's identified on the agenda that's going to clearly require a vote, you cannot deviate from that to expand what the topic is going to be in any great degree. Theoretically, you know, if you're going to vote on, if you're going to consider a matter, let's just say pickleball, anyone who is interested in the topic should come here and be available to speak should they choose to do so. But it's unfair to convert a discussion item into a vote item without letting them know that there's going to be a vote on that particular matter.
See what that said, going back to the example that Debbie gave. Again, it comes down to perception, because, I mean, obviously, if there are less courts, there's less noise, so it's a noise abatement measure. And so it may not be perceived as that because it wasn't a technology, but it was a measure. So it's within the bounds of-
Yeah, I'm not saying-
You know, we have to be liberal with that.
If it's within the scope of what was advertised, and that's why, see if I can use this as an analogy. When we advertise an ordinance, the title is supposed to be fairly specific as to what is going to be voted on and adopted as an ordinance. If you were going to take an action that was going to go beyond the scope of the title, that would not be permissible, because it's a published title, and you're kind of restricted there. On the other hand, if you're going to take a vote that may be more restrictive than the subjects that it would cover in the title, you are allowed to do that without having to re-advertise. So as long as there's a general relationship between what it is that you're going to vote on, like if you're going to vote on relocating the courts, and you were going to, as part of that, the discussion, the vote item or discussion item that was going to be voted on was just relocation. But then during the course of that discussion, it was not only going to be relocation, but reduction. I think that that would certainly be within the scope of what was originally on the agenda. If you went from relocation to elimination, that might be something that would be beyond the scope. And I'll also point out that, you know, quite frankly, the clarification that the court has presented with respect to the proposed resolution that you want, or consider adopting is helpful and may even be an improvement, be an improvement over the previous resolution. Resolutions don't expire unless there's an action of the City Council. So quite frankly, this nineteen ninety-eight resolution is still in effect and should be governing the way that the City Council conducts itself. So even if you didn't decide to adopt the new resolution, this resolution is one that should be followed by the City Council.
Well, and I would think that just like, should we adopt this, just like the codes of conduct, that that should be something that's on an agenda item in November when a new council is seated, so that these items are fresh in the minds. Because I have not seen this document before, so I think.
Which document?
You mean, you don't mean-
This one.
Re-adopted or just brought to everyone's attention?
I think it's where reaffirming.
Yeah, yeah.
Reaffirming in our-
It's on my calendar already.
Oh, good. Reaffirming in the consent agenda, so that a new council members have an opportunity to see it.
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't familiar with this either. I mean, I wasn't around in ninety-eight, so.
I actually discovered the nineteen ninety-eight resolution when I was researching the rules of conduct history, and I came across this resolution, so. That was another reason that I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay.
Well, I would point out that even something of an administrative nature, non-controversial, if it was important enough to be adopted without being placed on a regular agenda item, there would be an emergency quality to it. Otherwise, the appropriate action would be to defer consideration, even of the non-controversial one, to the next agenda, because what may be non-controversial to somebody may be controversial to somebody else. So it may be opening the door to further unnecessary debate, to add that non-controversial add-on, as the court has suggested. Although, from an administrative perspective, there may be times when it is necessary to bring something to your attention in order to meet a deadline or whatever that wasn't known or couldn't be put on the agenda in time for the regular agenda. And again, I would consider that to be, if the majority plus one considered that to be an exigent circumstance, an emergency circumstance, then you would not run afoul of the policy.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Don't we frequently have discussion items where things are voted on?
We do. And as staff, I guess, when we put, write the agenda item, we are going to be including some additional language from now on, that if we give you options, we're also going to say there are other options out there that may be considered along with whatever options we're providing you. So to open the door for you to be able to converse, because while I individually, after our individual meetings, know that something's going to come up, I can't tell you that.
Yeah, and I guess maybe I confused you all by saying-
Yeah, because you said if we have a discussion item, we can't vote on something.
There are some items that are purely discussion items. And we may be seeking, staff may be seeking direction. And so a consensus would be all that would be necessary to give the direction that's needed. There are some items that may be on the agenda as a discussion that may require some sort of formal action that might affect a budget or whatever, that go beyond, in my view, just a discussion item and-
So it shouldn't be listed as a discussion item?
No, it could be listed as a discussion, but where we put on the agenda, the action required, you know, it would indicate whether there was a vote necessary for that or just a discussion looking for direction.
Okay. Is there times when we're here and then we're like, well, what do you need from us? And you'll say, I think we'd like to have a vote.
Yeah, yeah, but-
And we don't know that until we're sitting here.
So it should be spelled out then on the cover sheet of that agenda item, just to be-
That would be helpful, and sometimes as the discussion evolves, it becomes apparent that there needs to be a vote in order to commemorate the action that was decided at the City Council. But the concern is not necessarily the formalities of that procedure. It's to introduce a totally unrelated issue that the public would not have been given adequate notice to chime in on.
Absolutely. Gary?
So I just want to be clear, if I understand the logistics of it. An item comes up at ten o'clock in the evening, the day before we meet in council. So we would really have to vote on it twice. We'd have to vote it once, or we'd have to have three plus one to rather-
Add it on to the-
Add it on to the, and then we would discuss the item?
Yes.
Okay, so we already have, then we have a safety net of going down a primrose path when we should be going down someplace else.
Yes.
I don't know why I said primrose, but, you know, you know what I mean.
But yeah, there would be-
Which road we take.
There would be a requirement to add something to the agenda by vote.
Okay, so if we get back to the agenda item, do we, are we allowed to vote on this resolution?
No, no. What you would, this is a discussion item, and so we're asking for direction.
Okay.
Would you like to consider a resolution of this nature? Would you like to simply maintain the existing resolution, knowing that it's in place? And if you'd like to consider adopting the resolution that's been proposed by the city clerk, which you certainly have the prerogative to do, it will come before you at an appropriate, as an appropriate agenda item at a advertised meeting of the City Council in the future.
I'd like to go forward with this.
What's your pleasure?
And this would require simply a consensus vote.
It's just a consensus right now. This will have to go-
I think we should just use what's already in place from nineteen ninety-eight. I don't see any reason to change it. It's already an adopted resolution.
I'm inclined to agree with Councilmember Matthews.
I agree.
I like the tweaking. I like the old one.
You like the old one as well?
Well, we have four plus one.
Okay.
Plus one?
Three plus one.
Three plus-
So there's a consensus. Would you, since it's already in place, would you prefer that Karen put that on as a consent agenda item in our next council meeting?
I'd like to just reaffirm.
So we can reaffirm it?
Yeah, that's good.
Sure, and then we're also making a recommendation that is reaffirmed annually?
Just so we don't forget.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good discussion. All right, recommendations from city officers, city manager.
Well, this meeting, we didn't have as many items. The next meeting in February, we will.
This is a pack of lunch, this is a pack of lunch meeting?
Well, it depends. I mean, we have the resolution on Buckley's Pass. Our Assistant Paralegal and Assistant to the Manager, you want to explain what's coming up? Again, we've said this before, but we want to reiterate it again.
Good morning, Mikhail Finkel, Paralegal, Assistant to the City Manager. At the next meeting, our legal counsel will be here. We will be presenting the initial assessment resolution. This resolution will have the answers to many of the questions that have been asked, like when we did the resolution of intent, you know, what the project cost is going to be, proposed assessment, and those are the decisions council will be making on that resolution. In the event you make those decisions and move forward, that's when the actual mailings will go out to individual property owners as to the water access units we have assigned and the amount they're going to be assessed. They will have twenty days to provide comment back to the city, and then they will also be noticed of an April third public hearing on the final resolution of intent. Adoption of that resolution will adopt the assessment for the coming year.
So that, we anticipate we'll have a couple of people there for that meeting. Also, possibly on the agenda, we may have the long-range financial plan, depending on how many other items we have on there. If we have to move that to the second meeting in February, we will. But that starts our FY twenty budget discussion. So, and there'll be other items as well, but we're already gearing up for some more heavy-duty meetings in February.
Okay. Thank you.
There you be.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Yeah, I want to give the City Council a heads-up that, and while this is not the appropriate time to discuss the merits or where we are in any of these cases, I want to let you know that in addition to the normal litigation that the city is involved in with slip and falls and accidents and all that, we have three active litigation matters, one involving the BSI and PGI canal maintenance assessments, one challenging a decision by the city's code enforcement board that was affecting Emerald Point condominiums, and one involving the building board's action regarding a contractor. So I've got a number of people involved in my office, and that's including, which goes, which has been ongoing for a while, the foreclosure regarding Dodge Plattner.
Plattner.
Yeah, so.
Have we heard anything from him?
Not recently, no.
Is he alive?
I wouldn't know, but I know, I know he's changed, I know he's either fired or changed attorney, so.
So there's one? I get resident questions about that.
I think, well, what I need, you know, what I need to do is, before we get too farther along in the other litigation matters, ask the attorney in my office that's handling that to turn up the gas on that. Let's get that moving. ask the attorney in my office that's handling that to turn up the gas on that, let's get that moving.
Okay. So there's really nothing to report at this point?
Nothing to report, I just, when you, when you start seeing my invoices and they may be showing a lot more litigation, I didn't want it to come as a surprise. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you for that heads up.
Because it will be more, you know, normally, I try to do as much as I can by myself, but when I involve other attorneys in my office, so instead of one attorney, you may have two, possibly three attorneys working for the city during a given month.
Okay.
I have a question. With regard to some of these slip and fall allegations, is there a statute of limitations in which they have to respond and move it forward, or does...
Yes, there are.
Some of them seem like they've gone on.
Our office doesn't represent the city on those, our insurance board does. But to answer your question, yes, there's typically a statute of limitations that applies to almost any litigation.
Yeah, because some of these drag on and on and on.
Oh, forever.
Well, the, the, once it's filed, as long as it's filed within the statute, it may drag on forever, but that's, that's the course of the litigation.
Okay, anything else? Questions for David? Okay, city clerk, Karen.
Yes, the first thing I have is just confirmation of a reappointment of Mr. Brad Gamblin by the Historic Preservation Advisory Board to the Donation Review Committee. Just requires council's confirmation of that. They're recommending that he be reappointed. His term expired, and the bylaws require him to be reappointed, so that's all this is doing.
Who to appoint?
So we have a motion to, Gary, you've motioned, you made the motion, and who's second? So there's been a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Gamblin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Let me come back to clarify something, the, because you may be asking this. The, the city has a separate law firm that also represents the building board. They are the ones that are going to be handling the litigation involving the building board because they actually participated, they know familiar, they're more familiar than I would be.
Great, thank you. Okay, Karen?
Okay, moving on with the boards and committees under vacancies. We have a three-year term as an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals, an unexpired term as an alternate on the building board, one unexpired term as an alternate, and one unexpired term as a regular member on the code enforcement board. And we have received, just so I know, we have received some applications, so we'll be filling some of those vacancies soon.
Great.
Okay, and moving on to nominations, we have a three-year term on the BSI Canal Advisory Committee. We do have one eligible applicant, that was Mr. Pryor, who introduced himself earlier. If you'd like to nominate and appoint, Mr. Pryor, you may do so by motion.
I move to nominate the point.
There's been a motion and a second to nominate and appoint Mr. Pryor. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
So under policy and legislation, I was going to mention Buckley's Pass, but thank you, Melissa, because that's a great thing we're moving forward. We got an email yesterday from the Florida League of Cities regarding the League of Cities Legislative Action Days in March, March 27, 26 and 27. I've already let Jerry Paul know that that was the dates coming up, but the Florida League of Cities didn't really have any, they didn't know what they were going to do when I spoke with him. So if any of you want to participate, I'm going to go. So if anybody else would like to go, if you would let me know, I will, I want to let Jerry know how many of us are going to go, and then how we coordinate that with the Florida League of Cities, because he wants to coordinate it with the Florida League of Cities. So I want to give him this information for him to work with us, to give us, and I want to do that quickly, so.
I'll probably want to go.
Okay.
Me as well.
Okay.
I was just in Tallahassee.
Okay, so, thank you.
Yeah, we pay our lobbyists to organize the whole shoot and match for you. So he does, he does a good job.
Okay. And that's all I had. Oh, and I want to congratulate everyone that was involved with Journey to the Future. What a great event that was. So it's hard to single out one individual. I know, Melissa, you kind of spearheaded things on behalf of the city. I know that the team, Pontagorda, and many organizations and participants, it was a wonderful event. And I'm looking forward to...